Session is called to order. Please rise for the singing of National Anthem.
(Music)
Please remain standing for the opening prayer to be read by Board Member Banis Senior.
The Sangguneang Panlalawigan Prayer. Dear Lord, as we deliberate in today's session, give us the wisdom to overcome passion. Give us that understanding heart to do away with prejudice. Give us the foresight to know the future may devise. Give us the courage and strength to seek the truth and what is good. Give us the facility of language that we may be understood. And finally, our Lord, make us worthy public servants of this province we deeply love and highly honor. The Province of Camarinesur, the premier province of Bicol Region. Amen.
Madam Secretary, Honorable Chief.
Honorable Vice Governor Fortinato C. Penya. Honorable Board Member Romulo O. Hernandez.
Present.
Honorable Board Member Russell S. Banyes. Honorable Board Member Wilfredo Rexi Oliva. Honorable Board Member Fabio F. Figuracion. Honorable Board Member Emmanuel H. Noble. Honorable Board Member Alexander James Haushan. Honorable Board Member Nelson B. Julian. Honorable Board Member Amador El Simando. Honorable Board Member Hilmar S. Pahamaran. Honorable Board Member Salvador A. Senior Junior. Honorable Board Member Juvena A. Senior. Mister Chairman, if you honor to certify the existence of Bicol.
Thank you. I designate Board Member Rex Oliva to be the temporary floor leader. Next item, please.
Approval of the agenda.
Ah, Mister Chairman, I move for the approval of the agenda.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Simando and Board Member Noble, the motion is approved. I, any inclusion? Ah, sige. Board Member James Haushan recognize.
Mister Chairman, I move for the inclusion of two items under business of the day. The first being a resolution requesting Director Elena de Los Santos, Officer in Charge of the Department of Agriculture, Region 5, to allow the province of, to allow the provincial government of Camarinesur for the distribution of palae seeds to farmer beneficiaries in the province under the Agri-Pinoir Rice Program of the Department of Agriculture. Motion, Mister Chairman.
Any second.
Ah, Mister Chairman, did I move that there was a motion for the suspension of the House rules? Did I hear any motion to suspend the rules?
None.
Considering that the items that the honorable Board Member of the second district is wishing to include, is not included in the agenda. There being no motion yet, Mister Chairman, I move for the suspension of the House rules to accommodate the item or items which the honorable Haushan would like to be included in our agenda.
Any second to the motion out to the Board Member Rex Oliva, to suspend the second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
May I continue, Mister Chairman? Thank you. The second, Mister Chairman is a, the second, Mister Chairman is a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor Miguel L. Luis R. Villaverte to enter into a counterpart funding scheme agreement with the Department of Agriculture, Region Field Office Number 5 for the availability of the farm tractors under the Agri-Pinoir Rice Program, which will be distributed to farmer associations and cooperatives in the province of Camarinesur. I move, Mister Chairman, for the inclusion of the two.
Any second.
A second.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, that will be all.
Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item. Board Member Julio recognize.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I move for the inclusion of a resolution urging all local government officials and employees in the province of Camarinesur to undergo mandatory drug testing in support of the advocacy of His Excellency President Rodrigo Ruha Duterte to intensify the campaign against illegal drugs and criminality in the country. Under business for the, Mister Chairman.
Second, any second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please. Any inclusion, please?
There being no other inclusion, Mister Chairman, I move for the approval of the agenda as amended.
Any second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
First reading, proposed resolutions. F2AA, a proposed resolution enacting the rules and procedures, rules of procedures in the investigation of administrative disciplinary cases against elective city and municipal officials filed before the Sangguneang Panlalawigan, Province of Camarinesur.
Ah, Mister Chairman, ah, we have proposed a resolution enacting the rules of procedure in the investigation of administrative cases, disciplinary cases against elective city and municipal officials filed before the Sangguneang Panlalawigan, Province of Camarinesur. We move that this particular item be transferred to business for the day.
Any second.
Under business for the day. So, this will not be under first reading. Instead, it will be transferred under business for the day.
Yes.
Will you not give time to other members of the August Body to study and peruse the proposed resolution enacting the rules of procedure?
Well, if it is the wish of the majority floor leader, then we will agree that each member of this August Body before this capes of this proposed resolution. And this should be referred to the committee on,
Dim mo' motion.
Committee on Administrative Cases.
Any second to refer the proposed resolution to the committee?
I second, Mister Chairman.
Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
To be proposed ordinances and ordinance authorizing the Honorable Governor Miguel Luis Villaverte to grant monetary reward and incentives in the amount of 500,000 pesos to person or persons who shall provide information leading to the arrest, prosecution, and conviction of drug lords and personalities engaged in drug-related in use crimes in the province of Camarinesur and appropriating funds for the purpose.
I move, Mister Chairman, that this proposed resolution be referred to the following committees. First, on the Committee on Laws and Review as this will not dis violate any law. And second, Mister Chairman, to the Committee on Peace and Order. And thirdly, to the Committee on Financing Appropriation considering that this entails appropriation for the purpose. So I move, Mister Chairman, that this be referred to the aforementioned committees.
Any second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3, circulars, letters, and other communications. F3A, that are dated June 28, 2016, from Casareco 2 Electric Cooperative, addressed to Honorable Vice Governor Fortinato C. Penya, requesting that said order and notice of public hearing be posted, the Publican Board, the Sangguneang Panlalawigan.
I move, Mister Chairman, that this item be referred to the Committee on Energy and Electrification.
Any second. Any second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3B, letter dated July 4, 2016, from Camarinesur Electric Cooperative, addressed to Honorable Vice Governor Fortinato C. Penya. Fairness, the Sangguneang Panlalawigan copy of the application including its annexes and accompanying documents submitted to the Energy Regulatory Commission's confirmations and approval.
I move that this item be also referred to the Committee on Energy and Electrification.
Any second. Any second, please. Seconded by Board Member Pakamara. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3C, letter dated July 1, 2016, from the Liga ng mga Barangay, addressed to Honorable Vice Governor Fortinato C. Penya and honorable members through Miss Ninfabicas Provincial Secretary submitting requirements for the assumption as the new ex officio member of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan of Camarinesur.
I move, Mister Chairman, that this item be transferred to the items under business for the day.
Any second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3D, letter dated July 4, 2016, from Honorable Tomas B. Bungalonta Junior, Municipal Mayor from the Municipality of Pilika, Camarinesur, addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan through Miss Ninfabicas Provincial Secretary, strongly object for the approval of the fourth special session of the Sangguneang Bayon of Pilika, Camarinesur, headed by Honorable Roelio Raymond D. Regondola as Municipal Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer last June 21, 2016, of Resolution Number 79 Series of 2016.
I move that this item be referred to the Committee on Financial Appropriations.
Any second. Any second. Seconded by Board Member Noble. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3E, letter dated June 29, 2016, from Honorable Augusto A. Camano, SB Member, the Purisima Pilika, Camarinesur, addressed to the Provincial Budget Officer. Fairness, the Sangguneang Panlalawigan copy of the letter.
Considering, Mister Chairman, that we are only finished of said letter and there is no action being asked from us, I move that this letter of Honorable Augusto Camano be duly noted.
My second. Any second. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3F, very urgent motion for the issuance of a temporarily standing order and/or injunctive order with case number 16A-22, formerly SBA Administrative Case Number 011, thus 2015, Espa Camarinesur Maria Belen A. Paula. In her capacity as the Sangguneang Bayon Member of the Municipality of Camarinesur, felon respondent versus IDO Florante, Laurel, Laurelde et al, Honorable Vice Governor, Honorable Miguel Luis Villaverte, at the Sangguneang Panlalawigan of Camarinesur, Special Committee on Administrative Cases and Appeals, complainant.
I move that this item be referred to the Special Committee on Administrative Cases.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Simando. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F3G, memorandum dated July 4, 2016, from the Provincial Governor, addressed to all department heads, chiefs of offices, chairman, committee on appropriation, members of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan and all other concerned subject budget call for calendar year 2017 issued primarily to prescribe guidelines to be observed by the department's offices in the preparation of budget proposal.
I move that this item be referred to the Committee on Financing Appropriations.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Noble. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
F4, review of municipal and city resolutions and ordinances.
I move, Mister Chairman, that the eight items be referred to the appropriate committees.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Pakamara. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Eight items addition.
How many items do we have under review of the notices and the solutions?
I think it's 11, Your Honor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Eleven.
Eleven.
I stand corrected, Mister Chairman, I move that 11 items under items for review be referred to the appropriate committees.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Pakamara. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Calendar business, unfinished business, G2A, election of chairman and members of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan, Camarinesur Standing Committee.
Mister Chairman, I was asked by the majority of the August Body that considering that there was already an initial election of committee chairmanship in standing committees of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan, I was requested to ask the secretary to just read the chairman of the standing committees of this August Body.
Chairman of the standing committees of the following standing committees of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan. Number one, Committee on Rules, Internal Government and Public Accountability. Chairman is Honorable Wilfredo Rexi Oliva. The Chairman of the Committee on Laws and Review, BM, Board Member Amador El Simando. Chairman of Financing Appropriation, Board Member Emmanuel H. Noble. Chairman of the Committee on Infrastructure, Chairman is Hilmar S. Pakamara. The Chairman of the Committee on Senior Citizens, Veterans and People with Disability, Chairman is Board Member Amador El Simando. Chairman of the Committee on Tourism, Culture, and the Arts and Local and International Sisterhood, Chairman is Board Member Alexander James De Haushan. Chairman of the Committee on Gender and Development, Women and Family Relations, Board Member Wilfredo Rexi Oliva. Chairman of the Committee on Social Services, Community Development, Extension Services, and Livelihood, Board Member Fabio F. Figuracion. The Committee on Mines and Geosciences, Chairman is Board Member Amador El Simando. Chairman of the Special Committee on Administrative Cases, Chairman is Amador, Board Member Amador El Simando. Chairman of the Committee on Franchises, Chairman is Board Member Hilmar S. Pakamara. Chairman of the Committee on Transportation and Communications, Chairman is Board Member Hilmar S. Pakamara. Chairman of the Committee on Cultural Communities, Chairman is Board Member Emmanuel H. Noble. Chairman of the Consumers Protection, Chairman is Board Member Nelson B. Julian. The Committee on Games and Amusement, Chairman is Board Member Nelson B. Julian. Chairman of the Committee on Land Use Conversion and Reclassifications and Provincial Properties, Chairman is Board Member Wilfredo Rexi Oliva. The Chairman of the Committee on Energy and Electrification and Renewable Resources, Chairman is Honorable Board Member Emmanuel H. Noble. Chairman of the Committee on Peace and Order, Human Rights, and Prisoners Welfare, Chairman is Board Member Nelson B. Julian. Chairman of the Committee on Labor, Manpower, and Versus Employment, Chairman is Board Member Hilmar S. Pakamara. Committee on Basic Education, Chairman is Board Member Wilfredo Rexi Oliva. Chairman on Higher and Technical Education, Chairman is Board Member Emmanuel H. Noble. Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, Chairman is Board Member Emmanuel H. Noble. Chairman of the Committee on Commerce, Trade, Industry, and Cooperatives NGO, Chairman is Board Member Wilfredo Rexi Oliva. Chairman of the Committee on Public Safety and Disaster Management and Environmental Protection, Chairman is Board Member Juvena A. Senior. The Committee on Municipal and City Affairs, Chairman is Board Member Juvena A. Senior. Chairman of the Committee on Barangay Affairs is still open. The Committee on Health, Sanitation, and Nutrition Population, Chairman is Board Member Fabio F. Figuracion. The Chairman of the Committee on Youth, Sports Development, and Drug Protection, Chairman is Board Member Alexander James De Haushan. Chairman, the Committee on Agriculture, Aquaculture and Agrarian Reform, Chairman is Board Member Nelson B. Julian. That's all, Your Honor. Twenty-nine committees, Your Honor. Twenty-nine standing committees.
Yes, Board Member Rex Oliva is recognized.
Ah, Mister Chairman, I move for the approval of the committee chairmanship of the standing committees of the Sangguneang Panlalawigan as read by our provincial secretary.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Noble and Board Member Pakamara and Board Member Russell Banyes. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
As to the, excuse me, Mister Chairman, as to the members, Mister Chairman, pursuant to the 2013 rules of procedure which we are temporarily adapting, it is stated that the chairman of the committees are given the prerogative and discretion to choose the vice chairman and the members of his committees. So the membership is, the chairman is, are given the blanket authority to choose who the chairman and the vice, and the, the vice chairman rather, and the members of his committees.
At least how many member?
It is stated, Mister Chairman, that the composition of a committee shall be at least five members, inclusive of the chairman and vice chairman, unless the committee chairman for justifiable reason request for lower membership.
Therefore, nasa chairman ang blanket authority mag choose kan saya based on rules.
Ayoko.
Next item, please.
Business for the day, inclusion of Honorable Haushan.
I move for the recognition of the Honorable Haushan.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Ah, the first resolution, Mister Chairman, is a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor Miguel Luis R. Villaverte to enter into a counterpart funding scheme agreement with the Department of Agriculture, Region Field Office Number 5 for the availability of farm tractors under the Agri-Pinoir Rice Program, which should be distributed to farmers association and cooperatives in the province of Camarinesur, Mister Chairman. And I believe, Mister Chairman, that all members of this chamber have been furnished a copy of the draft resolution for their scrutiny, Mister Chairman.
That is a motion, Board Member Haushan?
Yes.
Any second to the motion of Board Member Haushan? Seconded by Board Member Noble. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
The second, Mister Chairman, is a resolution requesting Director Elena de Los Santos, Officer in Charge of the Department of Agriculture, Region 5, to allow the, to allow the provincial government of Camarinesur for the distribution of palae seeds to farmer beneficiaries in the province under the Agri-Pinoir Rice Program of the Department of Agriculture. Again, Mister Chairman, these are all related to the visit of the Department Secretary Emmanuel Pinol yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, Mister Chairman, and I move for the approval of this head resolution.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member Rex Oliva.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, that would be all.
Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Inclusion of Honorable Julio.
Ah, this is the resolution, Mister Chairman. Ah, resolution urging all local government officials and employees in the province of Camarinesur to undergo mandatory drug testing in support of the advocacy of Excellency President Rodrigo Ruha Duterte to intensify the campaign against illegal drugs and criminality in the, in the country. Whereas, with the onset of the administration of President Rodrigo Duterte, calls for mandatory drug testing of all government officials and employees are being posed for the relentless fight of the government against illegal drugs and criminality. Whereas Article 2, Section 36 of Republic Act 9165 or Comprehensive Dangerous Drug Act of 2002 states that officers and employees of public and private offices, whether domestic or overseas, shall undergo a random drug test as contained in the company's work rules and regulation which shall be borne by the employer for purposes of reducing the risk in the workplace. Whereas per so to the same code, any officer or employee found positive for use of dangerous drugs shall be dealt with administratively, which shall be a ground for suspension or termination subject to the probation of Article 282 of the Liver Code and pertinent probation of the Civil Service Law. Whereas mandatory drug testing of all government officials and employees will be a powerful symbolic and obligatory act of the government to bring back public confidence and will show that the government are proper and worthy of the trust, especially to the people running the government. Whereas the Philippine National Police already administered the mandatory drug testing of all the personnel on the first day of the 30 administration and have tested numerous PD personnel positive of drug abuse. Whereas this is a presentation, Mister Chairman, in support with the advocacy of President of the Republic of the Philippines to fight drugs, had a role of His Excellency President Rodrigo Ruha Duterte for mandatory drug testing of all local government officials and employees in the province of Camarinesur. I move for the approval of this resolution, Mister Chairman.
Any second. Seconded by Board Member James Haushan, Board Member Simando, Board Member Russell Banyes, Board Member Rex Oliva, and Board Member Noble. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
And for the record, Mister Chairman, Board Member Pakamara and Board Member Noble are my supporters of this resolution, Mister Chairman.
Noted.
Your inclusion, sir, inclusion of Honorable Oliva. Transferred item from. The first.
This is not my inclusion, but as the floor leader, I requested that it be transferred from the letters, circulars, and other communication, and it is the duty of the floor leader to manage the items in the agenda. So I request the secretary, Mister Chairman, to read the letter coming from the Liga ng mga Barangay.
What I have, Your Honor, is. What I have, your honor, is a letter coming from the provincial chapter president together with the attachment, your honor, the documents pertinent to his request for recognition.
Ah, Mr. Chair, please, the director secretary to read the letter of the Ligan ng mga barangay.
Ayun, Madam Secretary kindly read the letter from the Association ng Barangay Camarinesur.
Ah, the Republic of the Philippines, Province of Camarinesur, Ligan ng mga barangay, provincial, July one, two thousand sixteen. Honorable Fortinato C. Penya Vice Governor and Presiding Officer and the honorable members Sangguniang Panlalawigan, Province of Camarinesur.
Madam Secretary, before we continue the reading of that letter, kindly occupy Kagawad Nelly Largo. Yeah, okay. Please continue, Madam Secretary.
Through Ms. Nimbabika, Secretary of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, subject first endorsement. Dear Sirs, Madam, may I respectfully submit the following documents of mine for the perusal of the august body and as requirement for the assumption as the new ex-official member of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan representing the Ligan ng mga barangay sa Pilipinas being the new president of the Ligan ng mga barangay Camarinesur Provincial Chapter succeeding former, former Ligan ng barangay chapter president, Honorable George Albengua, who is now Sangguniang Bayan Member of the Municipality of Pasakau, Camarinesur to it. Number one, personal data sheet. Two, oath of office administered by Honorable Governor Miguel Luis Arvila Ferte as Camarinesur Provincial Chapter President of the Ligan ng mga barangay dated July one, two thousand sixteen. Three, certificate of confirmation issued by the Ligan ng mga barangay sa Pilipinas Office of the National Executive Board certifying to the effect that I am the new Liga Chapter President of the Province of Camarinesur dated July one, two thousand sixteen. Four, minutes of the provincial chapter elections of the Ligan ng mga barangay Camarinesur Provincial Chapter held on December eighteen, two thousand thirteen at the Hamora Hall Villia Caseres Hotel, Magsay Say Avenue, Nagas City, certified by the Provincial Liga Chapter Secretary and duly noted by incumbent Provincial Liga Chapter President and the DILG Provincial Director. Five, certificate of canvas and proclamation, provincial chapter election of the Ligan ng mga barangay Camarinesur Provincial held on December eighteen, two thousand thirteen, certified by the Board Members of, Board of Canvassers and the Board of Election Supervisor. Six, accomplished certificate of compensation payment tax withheld issued by Ms. Mary Ann Ragata, authorized agent of the Bureau of Internal Revenue representing LGU Bula, Camarinesur. Seven, accomplished salen as of December thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, received by the Human Resource Management Office of LGU Bula, Camarinesur on January nineteen, two thousand sixteen. Eight, certificate of canvas votes and proclamation of winning candidates for Punong barangay and Kagawad Sangguniang barangay issued by the Commission on Election Bula, Camarinesur dated October twenty-eight, two thousand sixteen. Nine, Panunong pa sa katungkulan administered by Honorable Orlando N. Canet, Municipal Mayor, Bula, Camarinesur, as Punong barangay of Sagrada, barangay Sagrada Familia, Bula, Camarinesur dated November thirty, two thousand sixteen. With due indulgence, presented for your information and appropriate action where it truly yours, signed, Nelly P. Largo, Provincial Chapter President, Province of Camarinesur.
I believe, Mr. Chair, the letter sent the Honorable, uh, Nellie Largo, the Municipal Liga President of Bula is present. So may I move for the suspension of the House Rules to accommodate and to answer some questions which the members of this Sangguniang would like to ask.
Any second to the one motion. Any objection hearing and the motion is approved. Any question to the Honorable Nelly Largo? Yes, Board Member Rex Oliva.
So, Mr. Chair, before us is the Ligan ng mga barangay president of Bula and the executive vice president of Ligan ng mga barangay, uh, Camarinesur Chapter, uh, before, before, the executive vice president. So may I ask clarificatory questions, Mr. Chair, as to her assumption as the Ligan ng mga barangay president of Camarinesur concurrently to sit as ex-official member of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan. Ayun ah, Honorable Largo, there are conditions precedent or conditions in equanon relative to the assumption to office of Ligan ng mga barangay president in the province and maging ex-official member po ikdisa Sangguniang Panlalawigan. First, the claimant should be Apunong barangay. Are you Apunong barangay?
Yes, sir.
Of what barangay, please?
Oh, Sagrada Familia Bula, Camarinesur.
And are you the Ligan ng mga barangay president of Bula?
Yes, po. I am the Ligan ng mga barangay president of Bula Chapter.
And sitting concurrently as the ex-official member in the Sangguniang Bayan of Bula?
Bula, yes, sir.
As of this date, until now?
Yes.
So you were elected also as the Vice President of the Ligan ng mga barangay Camarinesur Chapter?
Yes, sir.
Who was your president then?
Uh, the Honorable George Bengua.
Uh, where is now Honorable Bengua?
So he is now the, uh, elected as a regular a member of the Sangguniang Bayan of Pasakau, Camarinesur.
So he is to, uh, performing, uh, the office of the Ligan ng mga barangay president of the province and the ex-official member in this Sanggunian?
Yes, sir.
So what does your constitution and bylaws says about succession? In case there is vacancy in the office of the president of the Liga Chapter?
Okay, so this is in accordance to the Ligan ng mga barangay Constitution and Bylaws, Section Two Vacancies and Succession. In case of a permanent vacancy in the office of the president due to refusal to assume office, failure to qualify, death or removal from office, voluntary resignation, or incapacity to discharge functions of his sure office or fails to comply with his sure undertaking executed, executed in accordance with Article Six, Section One, one point five of the Liga Election Code. So the executive vice president in the case of the National Liga or the vice president in the case of the local Liga at all levels shall assume the office for the unexpired term of the former, of the former. Succession shall take effect only after confirmation of the National Liga Executive Board. The vice president to assume the vacant position shall represent the Liga Chapter and the Sanggunian concerned.
So it mentions there that there should be confirmation from the Liga, National Liga Executive Board. Do you have with you that confirmation?
Yes, sir. I have an original copy.
Did you attach the same to the documents which you submitted?
Yes, sir.
Have you already took your oath of office as the new Ligan ng mga barangay president of the province?
Yes, sir. It was done last June thirty with our, with Honorable Governor Miggs Villaferte.
Ah, Mr. Chair, unless there are further questions from the members of this Sanggunian and considering that there is no legal impediments or restraints in the assumption to office of the Honorable Nelly Largo as the Ligan ng mga barangay president of the province to sit concurrently as ex-official member in the Sangguniang Panlalawigan of Camarinesur, I move that she be recognized and that she be included in the role of members of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan.
Any second. Any objection hearing and the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Board Member Noble, is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, dinyo li, representative of the Ligan ng mga barangay, Province of Camarinesur, Ramrinco nada district, Honorable Nelly Largo. So like as the Liga president, considering that one of our member of this Sangguniang Panlalawigan uh, aspirant for regional officer from provincial board members league in the person of Honorable Nelson Julia. May I know if also the other Liga president from the region five also to support or aspirant aspirant regional president from regional, region five be called? In the person of Honorable Nelson Julia?
Yes, sir.
Sir, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Noble. Yes, Board Member Haushen is recognized.
Uh, as a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, I just have an observation because, uh, I, I remember, Mr. Chairman, when before we were admitted as members of this august body, we were asked to submit several documents uh, to both Comelec, the DILG, and to the office of the Sanggunian Secretary. One of the documents that were required from each of us, actually, Mr. Chairman, was a certain document known as sworn statement of asset liabilities and net worth. Uh, I just noticed, Mr. Chairman, that the salen that, uh, that, that is currently attached, attached to, to, to her appointment is a salen that is dated December thirty-one, twenty fifteen. Although this was received by our, I don't know, I'm sorry, this was received by the HR, never mind. But the observation, Mr. Chairman, is this. I have two observations. The first observation is this salen, although I, I pose no objection, but I I'm just not sure if it will be required by the same office if, uh, if a new salen will be an updated salen will be, um, necessary. And the second observation, Mr. Chairman, given the fact that our, our our upcoming ABC president is a well-dressed woman from the municipality of is it?
Bula.
From Bula. I noticed, Mr. Chairman, and I find it very hard to comprehend that she only declared as clothing twenty thousand pesos. I believe it. Uh, so again, Mr. Chairman, I have no other objection. Thank you very much.
Yes, Board Member Banisinya is recognized.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I heard it right, we already recognized the Honorable
Yes, Board Member.
representative of the ABC and duly seconded. And, uh, I we should not be, ano, keep on delaying by taking her seat as a, as an ex-official board member of this chamber, Mr. Chairman. We, I, I would assume that we should treat her as co-equal, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Banisinya.
Ah, Mr. Chair, with the manifestation of the Honorable Banisinya, I move, I'm considering also that my motion for a recognition as an ex-official member of this Sangguniang Panlalawigan, I move, Mr. Chair, that we allow Honorable Nelly Largo to occupy the seat reserved uh, for the Ligan ng mga barangay president of the province of Camarinesur.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board mem, ah, Board Member Nelly Largo, please occupy your seat.
Pung pwede niyo, request?
Short speech then.
Board Member Largo na may nagre-request pong short speech po da.
Thank you.
Very good.
Preparado mo pala.
Tagal rin kunada, pero ming preparado.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our temporary presiding officer, Honorable Romolo Hernandez, with this, uh, Sangguniang Panlalawigan Secretary, um, names. And I feel nervous. My highly esteemed and honorable members of this august body, people of Camarinesur, good afternoon. I would like to express my sincere thanks and gratitude, first of all, to God Almighty, who allowed my presence in this very distinguished august body and also by allowing Honorable George Albengua to win as regular Sangguniang Bayan Member of the Municipality of Pasakau. If not for it, I won't be here. Of course, of course, I am extending my deep gratitude to my former Liga president, Chuchu Pengua, for his invaluable service to the Ligan ng mga barangay and for his great assistance extended for me. And of course, for the strong support of our beloved governor, Honorable Miggs Villaferte, for my, uh, for my fellow members of the Ligan ng mga barangay, for their full support and encouragement. For, for Vice Governor Atuo Penya, since he's not around, so, and my dear colleagues and this august body, so, should I call you now as my dear colleagues? For the warm and hearty welcome as your new ex-official member. Mr. Chairman, I am Nelly P. Largo and I am a mayor punong barangay of barangay Sagrada Familia of the Municipality of Bula, this province. Joining this honorable body as ex-official member may be an honor and distinct privilege to represent the one thousand thirty-six barangays of Camarinesur. But I do not see any pomp and power and glory in it. All I see is an enormous task and responsibility of holding up pure public trust and confidence before which I now shrink and humble. I know that my elevation to the Liga Provincial Chapter President and ex-official member of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan is a hard task and needs a strong commitment to the public service. But I would like to assure the people of Camarinesur and this august chamber as well that I will exert and do the best I can to push for local legislations that would truly address the economic progress and development of our barangays in particular, our people and the province Camarinesur in general. I will try to procure and fill up the responsibilities tasked in my shoulder are with unshakable faith in God, resolute determination and nobility of character. Being the representative of all the punong barangays in the entire province, I will try to build unity with a respect for diversity that we had found productive work for those able to perform it. To be true to ourselves, we must true to others. I believe that with the assistance and guidance of my distinguished colleagues as well as of our Lord Almighty, we can move mountains. I will overcome my inferiority complex, thinking that I am only girl. Instead, I am proud to become the only rose among thorns. Thorns that protects, that why, that's why aram ko po na daimanin dako kababayaan. You will pamper and secure me being a neophyte here. You will assist and teach me in my unawareness on this field. To my staff there, I am hoping that they will lend their loyalty and support to me as what they have done to my friend, Honorable Chuchu Pengua, who turned over this responsibility. I am assured that I can efficiently and effectively perform my duties and responsibilities. and effectively perform my duties and responsibilities as legislator. Rest assured that I will be a cooperative and a collaborative team worker of the Provincial Government of Camarinesur. Lastly, I would like to assure the members of the Liga ng mga Barangay, Camarinesur Provincial Chi- Chapter that I am willing to commit myself for the achievement and stability of our Liga as we work hand in hand towards effective and good governance and genuine public service. Thank you and pleasant afternoon to everyone. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Board Member Largo. Process, five minutes. The session is resumed.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe we are still, uh, our rules is still suspended. So may I just ask, Mr. Chair, from our secretary, if, uh, in the reading of the committee chairmanship, did, uh, she mention the Committee on, uh, Barangay Affairs?
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Is there a chairman?
No, it's still open, it's, it's being...
So considering, Mr. Chair, that, uh, the position, uh, that the position of a chairman in the Committee on Barangay Affairs is reserved to the, uh, Liga ng mga Barangay Provincial President, who is sitting concurrently as, uh, Ex officio member here, I, uh, move that, uh, she be, uh, recognized as the chairman of, uh, the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Board Member Rex Oliva, that is a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection hearing and the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Other matters. Announcements. Reminders. Adjournment.
Any motion?
I believe, uh, the Honorable Noble is, uh, uh, inquiring from, uh, the chair as to when will be our, uh, next regular session?
Madam Secretary, do you remember when our, our next regular session? July Twenty-Seven, I think.
July Twenty-Seven, Your Honor, that was the schedule given by the Vice Governor.
July Twenty-Seven.
July Twenty-Seven.
Yes, Board Member James Hoshan is recognized.
Uh, given the fact, Mr. Chairman, that we will be having our next regular session and that on the Twenty-Seven of July, may I, uh, cause an invitation, Mr. Chairman, addressed to the Department of Ed- uh, Education to send a representative to address this, uh, august body on the updates and, uh, status of, um, the senior high school that is on its first year of implementation for the province of Camarinesur. So this letter, Mr. Chairman, is, um, addressed to the Division Office of the Department of Education. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, kindly take note of that. Yes. Oh, to appear on July Twenty-Seven? Next item, please.
Isa yang ayembitaranta sa Twenty-Seven?
Dep ed po, Dep edri, uh, Senior Superintendent.
Ay, sorry.
Superintendent. Dep, this takes Superintendent.
Not exactly, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, the Superintendent, but, uh, whoever is knowledgeable as far as the senior high school, uh, status is, uh, uh, the implementation of the senior, uh, high school sta, uh, senior high school, uh, in the district of Camarinesur.
Madam Secretary, kindly...
Probably somebody from the planning section. Yeah, they have the data there.
Next item, please. Thank you.
Adjournment.
Uh, Mr. Chair, with all the matters in the agenda taken up, I now move to adjourn.
The session is adjourned.